Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council, which is on Tuesday, January 16, 2018 because of Luther King holiday. It's after 7:30 PM. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, February 5, 2018. I think that's also the same night that we have our annual dinner up at the hospital. So mark that on your calendar. And just so you know, I may or may not be there. I've been tabbed for jury duty that day. So, oh boy, no telling how long that will go. Okay, if you would, Mr. Paolo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansley?
Here.
Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
And Ms. Warden?
Here.
Everyone's here, welcome. Since we do have a quorum, the agenda will remain as presented. There's a little, it's in the agenda, but we will be having an executive session before our very last piece of legislation. So I figured we'd have that towards the end, and the executive session deals with the last piece of legislation, which is a contract with the fire department personnel. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of city council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion and a second to vote on the approving of the minutes from the January 2, 2018 council meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes of January 2, 2018 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Byten Dyke and council members. Nice to see everyone back for the second meeting of our new year here. Wanted to start out by recognizing somebody that I left off last time. She was actually on my list, but I got tight on time and I missed it. But Tammy Mojer is joining us as the new daily record person for the city council meetings. We welcome her back. Tammy's been around the governmental side and the downtown side for many, many years. It's nice to have a friend coming back to us.
If I may interject, and it was a wonderful article and picture from the last meeting. I told Husey to give you props on that. He probably didn't. Very nice.
Just to let you know, we had a phone conference with Standard and Pors last Friday to talk about the bonds, the sale of bonds that you all approved moving forward with for our water plant. They should be getting back to us, I think, sometime this week and hope to have them for sale within the next few weeks and have the thing closed by February 14, 15 range is what the look is now. But a very favorable response to the phone conference, so we are hoping that we'll see good rates come out of that. I was wondering if I could get on your calendar. Our charter says that the mayor is to give a update to city council or the public once a year, an annual update. And so if I could, for the February 20 meeting, starting at 6:30 PM, is the night I would like to do the State of the City address to city council. I don't see any other conflicts at this point with committee meetings or anything. And I checked with Mr. Byten Dyke, and he thought that that was an appropriate time too. So we will send out a reminder or a notice, but unless someone knows of a conflict with that, we'll assume that'll be the night. All right.
It'll be a Tuesday because of President's Day that Monday, for those of you who look a little confused why it was on Tuesday.
6:30?
6:30, yep.
Right here in this room, and very similar to past formats. I just want to talk about tonight's agenda, especially for our new council people. We sort of jump out of the gates quickly in this world, and there is a reason and a thought process behind it. If we can get out early with bids, a lot of times our bid numbers will come in more favorable than if we wait for a while. So as soon as we've got the budget approved and you start getting things in, our managers usually jump right in and go. So you've got road paving for almost a million dollars in front of you tonight, concrete street repair for $300,000, signal replacement for $145,000, culvert replacement for $60,000, replace vehicles in PD and PPM for about $290,000, fire department motorized cots for $81,000, materials for the water plant, $200,000, storm sewer fix and replacement, $150,000. So tonight, you have in front of you over $2 million worth of expenditures. So it's a big night for you, and it's the way the process should work, and we are thankful that we have funds to be able to do these kind of things to improve our community. And with that, that's everything I have to report tonight. So we're here to help and answer any type of questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any petitions nor communications from the public, so we'll roll right on to committee reports. Mr. Silvestri, you had a public utilities meeting just before council meeting, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Byten Dyke. We did have a committee meeting at 6:30 for the Public Utilities Committee. Other members, including myself, are Bill Bastancic and Jennifer Warden. I did see some numbered council members in the audience. Just to, in summary, we have over 400 miles of utility infrastructure. That's water and sewer lines within the city. Fifty-five percent of those are over 50 years old. So as we know, it's not that the price to bring the water up onto the ground increases exponentially or even increases that much over the years, but, and our personnel has even been reduced from 36 to 30 people over the years. But the increased cost really is capital and replacement of lines and keeping our infrastructure up to date. So if we don't do anything, we'll be out of cash by 2021 in both funds. And what we ought to be doing is replacing, you know, 1% to 2% of those lines every year. So I think the administration, Joel and his team, has done a great job looking at our unaccounted-for water, cutting that in half. So great job there. And I appreciate you looking forward also for a 10-year plan. I know we've been doing that lately with the city budget, but applying those same metrics to our water and sewer funds is a great idea. I appreciate Andre chiming in also during the meeting to mention that we'll be setting up a specific capital fund. We made a pledge to the public that what we were going to spend on capital as part of the tax increase, and I think we need to make that as visible as possible. So I guess the long and short of it is, in, over the next couple of months, residents are going to see an increase. And I want to thank Joel for not just doing a percentage increase, but also charging a dollar per meter equivalent, because I think that makes it more fair, more equitable across the board, residential versus commercial users. But for 2018, you'll see an increase of about $2.51 on the water side and $2.45 on the sewer side. And happy to report that we'll be seeing a decrease, it's $1.50 even, right, $1.50 on the trash side. So that helps to make it easier to swallow, if you will, on us. Appreciate that. But if anyone has any questions, I think there are extra copies of the presentation available. So thank you for all the time that you put into that. But I think we should have, I think it's important that we be proactive. We haven't done anything for about 20 years in terms of increase. We've done some small adjustments, but nothing to take care of our aging infrastructure. So kudos to Joel for getting this in line with where it needed to be. There's been some neglect even before Joel's time. I'm glad that we're catching up and doing the right thing and making these funds balance out. So thanks very much.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Silvestri. We have no old business, and we have a plethora of new business. I should point out that the first nine items are all budgeted, so they will, can be passed tonight, and I expect them to be passed tonight. The last two items, which will be presented by Mr. Sanders, are kind of timely in nature, and I'm not telling you what to do, Mr. Sanders, but I would expect you to suspend the rules on those items. Well, we'll start out. Mr. Bastancic will be sponsoring Resolution Number 2018-002. Before I get to you, Mr. Bastancic, I will have the clerk of council read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-002, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for resurfacing and pavement repairs on various streets.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, this is a request to authorize advertisement and award of contract to the lowest and best bidder for asphalt pavement and repairs on the following streets. That's Highland Park Road, Skylake Avenue, Catalina Avenue, Monterey Street, Highland, east of Cleveland Road, and Grosse Stalk Path, which I believe is going to be between Winkler and Highland. All of this, this will also include pavement planning, adjusting manholes and water valve boxes to grade, replacing new asphalt in pavement markings. And the engineering department will be doing all the construction and inspection of the work. This is, these streets are at the top of the priority road list, needing resurfacing, and all the utility work has just been completed on Skylak and Catalina as well. So I was going to ask Roger if he has any comments.
No, he said pretty good. Most of these are right towards the top of the priority, but you know, the pavement condition index rating, that we do every year, so just next on the list to do.
All right, any questions for council?
Other than a timeframe, are we looking at spring?
Well, definitely it'll be after, say, mid-April, because that's when the asphalt plan's open.
Right.
So you're looking at probably May, June, July.
Okay. Nothing further? Do you have a motion there, Mr. Bastancic?
Yes. So the administration can get the bids out early. I move to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is our second. Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansley?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 2018-002 passes. That brings us to Resolution Number 2018-003. It will be presented by Mr. Bastancic, and as I said previously, it is budgeted. Before I get back to you, Mr. Bastancic, I'll have Linda Paolo, if she would, please read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-003, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for concrete pavement repairs on various streets.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Now, this request is to authorize advertisement and award of a contract to the lowest and best bidder for concrete pavement repairs on Country Club Lane, Mini Lane, Merritt Drive, Normandy Drive, Patrick Place, Melanie Drive, and Brookway. Now, this is not a complete reconstruction of the street, but we'll, they will be removing failed areas and replacing, replacing those areas with new concrete material. Again, all the design engineering inspection will be done in-house, and this is also a road, these roads are also near the top of the list for concrete repairs. I'm asking this. You have another?
Yeah, once again, these are at the top of the list, and we like to bid things out early so we can get on people's schedules, get a better price. And Mark, you will, same timeframe for completion on this.
Okay, thank you.
Any further question? Seeing none, do you have a motion there, Mr. Bastancic?
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is our second.
The second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-003 passes. We'll turn our attention to Resolution Number 2018-004. This will also be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is budgeted. Before I get to you, Mr. Bastancic, I'll have our clerk of council read the title, if she would, please.
Resolution Number 2018-004, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase and installation of a traffic signal and related equipment at Madison Avenue and State Route 83.
Thank you. Mr. Bastancic, once again, the floor is yours.
This one's pretty much what I was just read. This will be a complete replacement of the signal systems, not only the lights, but the electronics as well. And again, this signal is probably one, is an over signal, and is also at the top of the list of, in the survey for signals that do need replacing. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, Kurt's people do a survey of all the traffic signals. It's kind of same as we do with the pavement condition index. This is one at the top of the list, so that's why we picked it up and replaced.
Well, I will say, when that area annexed in many years ago, the OERDC, we knew at that point we were inheriting a signal, and try as we might to get the ODOT to participate in that, that they gave that one to us. So we do appreciate all the funding they give us on other projects, but that one, we get to take care of that one.
Well, it's interesting how expensive traffic signals are. I think most people would be surprised. Mr. Silvestri?
Are there guidelines for that? I mean, they're compelled to help us on other ones they pin, right?
You know, I've had this discussion many times with ODOT. By law, all facilities, roadway, signals, those things, on a state route that pass through a municipal corporation limit are the responsibility of the municipal corporation to take care of. By policy, so just by policy, they take care of what they define as major items. That definition can change a little bit depending on the project. So it's a major item or something that's on their overall state route paving plan. So you'll see some paving on 83 that ODOT is doing, paying for the majority of that because it was on their overall statewide paving plan. But other than that, anything else falls to us to do. So obviously, ODOT paid for Route 30, any major bridge repair replacements they would do, but minor bridge maintenance, those things, we are responsible to take care of.
Any further questions? Mr. Bastancic, do you have a motion for us?
Again, so the administration can get as early as possible to get it in. I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansley. Would you please call the roll?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-004 passes. We're going to give Mr. Bastancic a brief respite, and we'll have Mr. Silvestri sponsoring the next resolution, which is Number 2018-005. Before I turn the floor over to you, Mr. Silvestri, I will have Ms. Paolo, if she would, read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-005, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a new sanitary sewer serving the Beaver Alley area between Walnut Street and Market Street.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you. For those that were present at our committee meeting before this council meeting, you heard that one of the ways in which we detect leaks in water lines is through listening. Well, this is a little different. Here, this was detected through our sense of smell. So this one was literally sniffed out, and it wasn't by a canine dog either, as far as I know. It was, someone complained of a sanitary sewer odor, and it's right down, the area described here is the alley between Walnut Street and Market Street, south of Liberty, but north of South Street. And if you look at that quadrant on a map, there's actually a north-south alley, and there's an east-west alley. It's in the east-west side. It's near the Spoon Market there is where the illegal mixing of the two systems is. So we don't want to leave this alone. We are required by state law to make sure that sanitary sewer does not go into the storm sewers. So we've got to do it, and I guess based on the layout of the lateral, they split the cost between the sanitary sewer fund and the storm sewer fund, and we need to bid this out and get it done. So I'm glad we're bidding it out. I mean, sometimes if these things are of an emergency nature, we just have to get them done, but I think we can, if we move quickly, we can still bid it out and get the best price possible. So I'll be looking to pass this tonight.
Any further questions? I noticed this summer that things were a little robust in that area in terms of odor laws. That explains it. Seeing none, do you have a motion for us, Mr. Silvestri?
I move to suspend the rules.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I move for adoption. Yes, correct.
It's motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-005 passes.
Just to note, Beaver Alley is not misspelled. In fact, at the Spoon restaurant, there is a plat map of downtown Worcester, and I don't know what year, but prior to 1900, and Beaver Street actually was spelled B-E-A-V-E-R. I don't know when the A got dropped off somewhere, somewhere after that, but if you're ever there at the Spoon restaurant, take a look at the plat map. Well, we'll be returning back to Mr. Bastancic. We figure since he's had one little bit of rest, he can do one more.
I'm all warm, but.
Okay, that's good. But before I get to you, I will have Ms. Paolo read Resolution Number 2018-006. Just the title, please.
Resolution Number 2018-006, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of a culvert on West Wayne Avenue.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours. Again, this is a budgeted item.
Thank you. This is a request to advertise and enter into a contract, again, with the lowest and best bidder for replacement of existing corrugated metal pipe running under West Wayne Avenue just east of Oak Hill Road. Flow line has deteriorated to a point that all would need to be replaced, and the pros replacement will be reinforced concrete pipe, complete with head walls and rim walls, not like the current corrugated metal. It hasn't failed yet, but it has been deteriorating, and if it does fail, necessary emergency repairs and a closure of the road. So, any questions, citizens?
The road will still be, oh, I'm sorry, can I ask? The road will still be closed for the replacement?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And then just to add, we've been working with the Country Club, and on the south side of that culvert, they have that little fenced-in area in the guardrail, where we're going to put a big junction chamber there and get rid of that guardrail fence. So it should look a lot nicer when we get rid of that stuff. So just want to throw it out.
Anything else from council? Seeing none, I look to you for a motion, Mr. Bastancic.
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-006 passes. Well done, Mr. Bastancic, and we'll let you off the hook for the rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Now we have Resolution Number 2018-007, double-oh-seven there, Mr. Cavan. Before I get to you, Mr. Cavan, I will have Ms. Paolo read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-007, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase power cots for the Division of Fire.
And Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours, and it is a budgeted item.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, this is a request to purchase three Stryker Power Load powered fastener system for our EMS fire division. The purpose of these is to aid our technicians in helping to load patients into and out of our emergency vehicles without so much strain to the folks that are doing the heavy lifting. It has shown to reduce back injuries, other decreases in productivity from our personnel. And I had talked with the chief today, and it just seems that it's a really good example of working smarter, not harder. And again, we're looking for three of these for our ambulances, and also a $40,000 grant to help offset a good portion of the cost. And Chief Salee is kind enough to show up and help answer any questions that you may have, if there is any.
If I could, I'd like to just clarify the title of the resolution. It says powered cots. It's the Power Load System for our cots. So just two very different items that we were purchasing, so I wanted to clarify that.
Because it sounded like the power cot was for you guys to take power naps.
No, no, we never do that. So we already have the powered cots. They're the ones that raise and lower. The Power Load System is what our cots connect into lifts and loads and unloads onto the ambulance.
Is it a track system? It grabs it and just pulls it into the back?
Yeah, it's hydraulic and electronic, but yeah, it's very similar to what a track system.
Almost like a roller coaster coming into home. Very.
We looked at that. Much lower speeds.
Not nearest fun, though.
The power cots that you have work in tandem with, it's the same brand?
Yep, same brand. They're compatible, and that's why we chose this vendor. And they're the only ones that have this type of system that is actually power loading that connects in.
Chief, we're getting three of these units, so don't we have four? Are you not going to put it in the backup?
Yeah, we're not putting it in the backup, just to reserve, we're just putting it into the three primary units. So as a, not going to be costing us any point, but when we're looking at, you know, $28,000 per unit, and the amount of times that our reserve medic goes out, it would behoove us more to just use it in our primary units.
Okay.
If there's no further questions, I would make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-007 passes. Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash double oh seven passes. We'll turn to Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero zero eight. It will be presented by Ms. Warden. It is budgeted. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will have Ms. DePaulo, if she'd be so kind, to read the title.
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero zero eight. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase vehicles in accordance with the capital plan for twenty eighteen.
Ms. Warden, it's my pleasure to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, President Bytenberg. After speaking with Chief Fisher and with Kurt Denning, the property maintenance manager, I've learned a few facts that may be of interest with particular interest of the police department vehicles. One of the vehicles that will be replaced was damaged in the December pursuit of the local fugitive, if some of you may remember. The insurance investigators totaled that vehicle, so the city will be reimbursed for approximately sixteen thousand dollars, which will, you know, help offset the cost. The cost will be forty-four thousand five hundred dollars per vehicle, and that's a pretty close estimate. A couple of other little pieces of information. There are two vehicles that will be replaced entirely. That includes all of the installed equipment and decals. Those are Chevy Caprices, which the department used to use regularly. Those will be replaced with the Ford Interceptor SUV, and the other is a retired Ford that they've been using. The two non-total vehicles will be placed up for auction on govdeals.com, where some of the funds will be recouped back to the general fund. Probably not a large amount, but every little bit counts. And, the... Oh, the equipment in the Ford that is being replaced will be... Some of that will be recouped by... It's a gentleman. Help me out, Chief here. There's...
From one Ford to another.
Thank you. It might not all fit, you're saying, but you've got a gentleman that will replace what is...
Our third... Our vendor that does the install, I was having him come out and go through it and go, yep, this rule, we can reuse all of this. You know, we need new connectors here. We need new lights here, and then... So, that reduces the cost, whatever that we can reuse. And, just one correction, Ms. Warden. One of those vehicles, we are going to keep and cycle out a Crown Vic that we're still using as the school resource officer car.
Okay.
So, we'll recycle that Caprice into be that vehicle.
Thank you for the clarification. And then, we also have a dump truck purchase that has also been budgeted. This will bump the fleet back up to thirteen. I believe there's one retired vehicle or that is ready to be retired, and that vehicle will also be placed on govdeals.com. The approximate value of that is about twenty-five hundred dollars, which would also be added to the general fund. And, I understand that once these are passed, if these are passed today, we will have that truck ready in time for the fall leaf collection. These trucks are used for general road maintenance, leaf collection, and snow removal throughout the city, and so it will be equipped with a truck... Or, I'm sorry, with a dump bed, a snow plow, and a salt spreader. The funds for these have been budgeted, and the approximate cost for this pick... Or, I'm sorry, for this dump truck is a hundred and sixty thousand. I think that's all. If there's any questions?
Those Caprices were some of the first vehicles that you purchased when you started?
They were, two thousand eleven.
Yeah, so they've been around a long time.
Yes, sir.
It's marvelous. And the dump truck, you know, every time we've replaced a dump truck, it seems we've got twenty-plus years of service out of them. You know, it's an amazing job that your crew does at the maintenance garage that keeps these running, because these aren't things that just get parked and only used three months out of the year. They've got heavy use year-round, so that's really a tribute to the fellows and women at the garage.
Kurt, what's the mileage on the one we're getting rid of? Do you know off the top of your head?
About one twenty-five, one hundred twenty-five thousand. They're hard.
They're hard miles, yeah.
Hard, hard miles.
Plus, they spend a lot of time sitting, running, as they're waiting to complete a job. I mean, doing just leaf pickup, they might only put four miles on it.
It takes six hours to go four miles.
Yeah, exactly. And while I'm on it, I want to give kudos to your road crew. They've done a wonderful job during these last snowstorms. I notice they're out there right away, and by the time the incident is over, the roads are clear and traffic's moving through the city. So, good job to you and your crews, and hopefully you'll pass that on.
Mr. Denning, they were even actually on my road this last week after the snow. They were brushing the snow off the piles of someone's leaves, and they had the leaf truck out. So, they were actually still finishing that. So, yeah, well done.
Any further questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that the lead time, again, for the trucks is about eight to nine months, so it's important that we pass this today so that we can get that...
It's budgeted, so you can do that by making a motion to adopt there.
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero zero eight passes. We'll be turning to Resolution number twenty eighteen zero zero nine. It will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. It too is budgeted. If you would, please read the title, Ms.
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero zero nine. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest invested bidder for the purchase of certain materials for the water treatment plant.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Well, we spent an hour talking about our water system before this meeting, and the mayor mentioned we have about what we anticipate to be about a two-hundred thousand dollar need here for chemicals for our water treatment plant. So, lime, soda ash, and sodium hypochlorate are the three different compounds, and the lime and soda ash are used in the softening process, and the sodium hypochlorate is a disinfectant. It prevents any bacteria from growing in the event of a depressurization or a line break in our system. So, we've got to purchase them. They're part of the process. I'm glad that we are bidding these out. You know, one question that just comes to me, Mr. Gibbons. How many bids do we usually get for these items?
Depends on the chemical, but usually four or five.
So, that really helps to ensure that we get a good deal, and we hope that by passing this now and then bidding them in March, that there'll be plenty of bids come in so that the citizens get a good value on those items. If there are no objections, I'm looking to pass this this evening.
Since it's budgeted, you can do that.
I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero zero nine passes. Brings us to Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero ten. It will be presented by Mr. Cavan. It is the last of the budgeted items under New Business. Before I get to you, Mr. Cavan, I would ask very kindly of Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero one zero. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a technical services contract with Medicaut of Cincinnati, Ohio, for billing services related to the city EMS service.
Mr. Cavan, the floor is yours.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is a request from the Division of Fire, looking for approval to renew our medical services third-party billing agreement. Normally, this is yearly, but this one, I believe... I'm sorry, I just got this running again. But this contract length is four years, hence the need to bring it before council because of the overall costs over four years. I did speak with Chief Saley today, and we were talking about the service fees would not exceed forty-nine thousand nine hundred per year, and that is a capped cost. So, normally, they wouldn't need to bring it to council. But part of the agreement is, in the contract, is to main paying the original six percent fee or, again, that capped cost of forty-nine nine per year and not to exceed that total. So, I thought it sounded like a pretty good negotiation skill from Mr. Saley to put a cap on that cost for us.
Is this the one we've been using all along?
They had merged with another since the other contract.
We were with NBI right before I became chief, or Acting Chief Murphy entered into an agreement, and then this was an extension to the care board with a new four-year contract. When we were looking at our EMS call volume, it's been increasing. Last year was four percent from sixteen to seventeen, nine percent from seventeen to eighteen. What I wanted to try to do was put a cap on it so that we could actually forecast our costs. Now, if we exceed the... Our revenues, you know, we're capped at that instead of paying over, so it is a pretty good deal, but we can forecast where our cost per year will be over the four-year term. To get the P.O. in place and start paying our bills, we need to get the legislation passed for the contract.
Well, I know in the past that they've been very proactive in terms of collecting.
Chief, I've looked at the numbers here. Under the twenty-seventeen, January through December, charges to a little over two million, payments almost eight hundred thousand, adjustments one point two million. They're... What did these people collect for us, the seven hundred ninety-nine thousand?
Yeah.
And they failed to collect one point two million?
No, the adjustments are inclusive of Medicare, Medicaid, different private insurance caps. So, Medicaid pays out at a hundred percent, but it's, let's just say for easy terms, it's three hundred dollars. So, Medicare will pay, even if our bill is seven hundred for easy numbers, for each transport, but Medicare will only pay three hundred. So, if they pay out three hundred, that is a hundred percent payable, but we would have the adjustment of four hundred dollars. So, because we have a large Medicare/Medicaid base, and our transport fees, we're seeing higher adjustments, and that's why I like the number below, which is our collection rate. We're showing a ninety-three point nine percent collection rate of what we're actually able to collect from all of our vendors.
But a collection agency is not really necessary to collect from Medicaid or Medicaid.
No.
You really have to look at what's being built that they're actually going after.
Yeah.
And that's the number smaller than the seven hundred ninety-nine.
Yep.
It's closer to them. Basically, on the numbers below, that's going to be closer to five hundred thousand dollars that they're actually in collecting.
No, they're bringing in the seven ninety-nine.
But they don't have to collect from Medicare or Medicaid. There's no collection agency calling Medicare/Medicaid to pay.
You're absolutely correct.
And I'm just looking down here.
It's not a collection agency. It's just what our billing company is going out and actively collecting from all of those agencies. Now, we do not go to hard billing. We bill out to our residents, whatever their insurance company will pay. So, that's why we're seeing that, you know, higher adjustment number.
So, what are we paying six percent of?
We're paying six percent of the actual charges that are billed out. So, six percent of the two point two.
No, it's only six percent of what they collect, isn't it?
Yeah, six percent. Six percent, yep. You are correct, right?
They're not collecting.
Mr. Myers, for clarification, it really isn't collection. It's a billing process for every Medicaid transaction at the eight hundred dollar rate or seven hundred dollar rate.
They're handling all of the pay.
You have to generate the bill to Medicaid, and the Medicaid system, it's reviewed, it's paid, and then it's forwarded into the city's account. But the process, the transactional fee is what that seven percent, you know, encompasses. It's not really collections like you would think.
It's not a collection agency.
No, it's a billing agent. Administrative, so we don't have to do the Medicaid billing. I'm familiar with that at the Nick Amster in the one-six-nine board. It's a previous process.
And it's specialized billing as well. It's not your average sit-down and do a monthly statement or anything. It's a lot involved. Specialized. I would make a motion to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Cavan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty eighteen zero ten passes. Brings us to ordinance number twenty eighteen zero zero one. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. I understand that it's some time-sensitive matters with regard to... This is a state mandate. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, would you please read the title, Ms. DePaulo?
Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero zero one. An ordinance amending section seventeen oh one point oh three of the codified ordinances of Worcester correspond with chapter seven eighteen of the Ohio Revised Code, repealing certain ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, who's looking very mountain man with that beard. I understand it's the Klondike Derby this weekend. I'd have more than a beard to try to keep warm this weekend. But I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We can thank the State of Ohio and House Bill forty-nine for these required changes. House Bill forty-nine became effective on September twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, and with its... With becoming effective on that date, has changed certain requirements in the, in chapter seven eighteen of the revised code, of the Ohio Revised Code. And what this does for the City of Worcester is we need to make these changes to fall in line with the new state, with the new state code, and to make our... Specifically, this is for our local income tax laws. Now, these are items, too, that, if we remember, with House Bill forty-nine, there is some litigation going on regarding certain parts of it, but the items that we're looking at here and the changes are not part of that. These are just, like you say, these are basically housekeeping items within the definitions of our codified ordinances to bring them in line with the state. As Mr. Bytenberg alluded, the state is requiring us to pass this by the thirty-first of this month, and what... The reason why it's come to us at this time is Mr. Dordia and the city had hoped that the lawsuit... That we would have been able to do this at one time encompassing all the changes that are going to be part of House Bill forty-nine, but since that has not been the case, we have to do this kind of in two steps. So, we've got step one here tonight, which will be just, like you say, housekeeping items, and then assuming how everything shakes out with the litigation regarding House Bill forty-nine, we'll have other items to discuss in the future. At this point, if there's any questions, Mr. Dordia is here.
This doesn't change anything in terms of the income tax. It's just trying to jump through the hoops set forth by...
Mainly definition changes.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, numbering changes, definition of what is considered an employee, definition changes of what is considered an employer, definition of gross receipts, changes to net profit for an individual, and then definitions of a tax administrator. So, like you say, it's really, it's really benign in terms of what we're looking at here.
Yeah, and it doesn't change the way we've been doing anything. It just reconciles what our ordinance, our ordinance is saying with the state law.
And until that case is resolved, we're still going to collect the tax?
Yeah.
And that's one of the issues in the... And that's one of the issues in the case down there, is they wanted to state due central collection.
For the net profits, correct.
Yeah.
There's a temporary injunction on that.
Right, so...
These changes have been known since September 29. There's been no litigation pending.
No, none.
These have been since September, but we got them last week.
And the reason why, I was waiting for the lawsuit.
But these weren't going to change regardless of the lawsuit. These were definitely known in September.
Correct.
Well, if there is, if there are no other questions, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rule by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule.
Cavlin?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Because I wasn't wanting to come back for a special meeting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavlin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance Number 2018-001 passes. I will look to someone to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations and bargaining.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to go into executive session?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavlin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, then we will now go into executive session and go off the record. Okay, we are out of the conference room, and I will look to someone to make a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go back into regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sylvester, second, would you please call the roll on coming back into regular session?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavlin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And the last item of new business is ordinance Number 2018-002. Is there a zero missing, or maybe I missed the zero? I must have missed it. Okay. Yeah, I thought it was really different.
It's my title here.
Okay.
But we got it right here, Richard.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I thought maybe it was mine. If you would please read ordinance Number 2018-002. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, slated for three readings.
Ordinance Number 2018-002, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have with this ordinance is the agreement between the Patrolmen's Benevolent Association and the City of Administration of the City of Worcester regarding wages, benefits, terms and conditions of employment for the two bargaining units of the police officers, sergeants and lieutenants. We just, at this point, I just want to say thank you to all parties involved in getting this, getting this done as quickly as they did. And in light of the information that we've heard previously, I would motion, would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavlin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, then we will now go into executive session and go off the record. Okay, we are out of the conference room, and I will look to someone to make a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to go back into regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sylvester, second, would you please call the roll on coming back into regular session?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Cavlin?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance Number 2018-002 passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start out with Mr. Myers.
Nothing further to add this evening.
Okay, Mr. Cavlin?
As well, nothing further to add, thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Nothing further.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes, I want to highlight tonight that we saw exceptional performance from the two rookie council members. Mr. Bastancic, in less than 20 minutes, secured authorization for $1.5 million worth of capital spending for infrastructure improvements for the great city of Worcester. And the, Ms. Warden, in less than 12 minutes, secured nearly $400,000 worth of capital spending for safety service items. So commendable performance, that's all about efficient government. But the real keynote there is that we had the funds available thanks to the support of the citizens of Worcester. We had it planned for. It was all items, all expenditures were budgeted, and we had efficient approval. So that's a very proud position to be in, and well done, Jennifer, well done, Bill. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Warden?
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Mr. Sylvester?
Nothing further to add.
Mr. Sanders, we gave you the last word in legislation. I'll give you the last word in miscellaneous.
Very good, well, thank you. I will ask to, for March 5, to have a laws and ordinances committee meeting at 6:30 PM, and this will be related to the zoning changes that the zoning steering committee has been working on. I know we've previously had, I believe, two meetings. I haven't, but we had two meetings back last year, and at this point, this is just a continuation of the zone code changes that have been working through. So again, March 5, 6:30 PM, here in council chambers, and that's all I have.
I forgot, I wanted to mention one thing. Chief Saley was nice enough to text me pictures of the new fire engine that I was encouraging all of us to approve last year. We finally got it in, and it's beautiful, and best of luck with the new fire truck. Thank you for sending the picture, very nice.
Once it gets fully implemented and tools on it, we'll set up an unofficial...
Bring it up to me.
Everybody. It needs to go to the shop to get all the polyboard in and tools attached, so it's ready to go.
Chief, we don't just want a picture, we want a tour before a council.
Bring it up.
I want to drive it.
Okay, yes to the tour, no to Mr. Ansel.
I want to drive it.
You give these guys a minute, they take a mile. And one last reminder, if you're not, Matt's not going to the dinner meeting at the hospital, please call Janice Black. So if you're planning to attend, you don't have to bother. So, Mr. Sanders, I see move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.